So is that works?
Something's wrong with the camera, so I've got it on nine.
Okay.
Let's see that later. Oh, it's only seven to one. All right, uh, seven to one for public meetings of order for, um, Newfield's Board, April 23rd, 24th. Uh, first up, uh, Chief Boxman.
Yes?
You're on the list, seven to one.
All right, so just, uh,
Oh, thank you. May 4th, yep.
Just what direction do you guess?
Um, at this point in time, our town com- I talked to town council about it. Um, I think he should go forward with the statement about occupancy and the other issues that are outstanding. Will have to be addressed in May when you notice a decision.
It stinks that, but it's just come as this.
Yep. Yep, talking to council.
Clarification, it will go till, because I believe that maybe it's as close as four. So the certificate of occupancy you're referring to, you're talking about, will go until, like, May 2nd or something like that?
Uh, no, I just figured if occupancy is for a year, correct?
Yeah, it's really, it's really a place of sense.
Yep.
Kind of still, you know, um, it can be, it can be dated back, you know, on some issues.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I think you issue it as you normally issue it. Um, because those other issues, I think, need to be addressed, independent of what you need to do as a town.
So what we're going to still, like, reset the issues?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's the only grounds that we have for it. I mean, there's, there's no reason not to issue a certificate if they're in compliance with that aspect of it. The other issues dealing with the septic, um, the inspection, um, the driveway, and, you know, basically everything that goes into decision that the planning board agreed with the vernons on, will have to be addressed on those, those may deadlines.
I still gotta inspect something.
Of course.
It's okay, go forward.
Yep, yeah, again, I talked to local council, I think there's no reason not to deal with that. We'll deal with the other issues.
Early on, okay.
That's it?
That's it, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, thank you, chief. Uh, all right. Uh, next up, uh, conservation commission email request.
Can't speak back.
Yep.
Yeah, so, um, in our last meeting, the talk of mail came up. The conservation commission is operating under our own emails, one at town, one at the mail, it's kind of like you guys in one select board.
Yep.
So a discussion came up, um, about what is it based to get town emails for, um, the conservation commission and other boards in the town, um, as far as I know, the planning board doesn't have theirs as well. So, I sent an email to, and I asked chief, one of us, if the conservation commission as a board has an email address. And then followed up explaining that there was a monthly fee associated with the number of mail handles.
Yep.
And that the estimated cost, I think, issue through, I don't know, something like $500 per year for the conservation commission.
How many members are there?
Seven.
Seven, okay, great.
The whole, so.
Yep.
So, yeah, I'm not sure what the process is like for that, or if it's something that I think would be good to explore. I don't know if that's something that we include in our operating budget, or if that's something that we request from select board or whatever. It would be good to have, you know, all the folks have a town email address, so that way they can do account business on that and keep their personal emails.
It's recorded.
That's recorded.
Yep. Um, so, uh, for context, of course, so last year, when we were going through the budget, the police department basically migrated us over from the old, uh, software and servers. And the issue came up about, do we get emails for all the board and commissions? It's pretty pricey when we throw in all the board member at the right time. I know that, you know, there are a lot of people who prefer not to have separate emails, right? They operate basically from their own personal email, because that's what they check every day, and that way they're aware of it. But, you know, to the extent that the, everybody in the conservation commission is going to use their emails? I, I mean, is there a request by, I, I think that we can figure out if there are members who want a newfieldsnh.gov email, we can do that. If you're not going to use it, newfieldsnh.gov though, just tell us. That way, we're not just spending money for an email account that doesn't get used.
Sure.
So, I think if you guys on the commission can basically give us a list.
Yep.
We'll, um, Bill Blais and, and, and the police department basically is working to organize that. Um, we'll figure out, uh, how to do that. Budget-wise, uh, it's not in your budget right now. I would suggest that the conservation commission comes up with a budget for the upcoming year. You guys include that as part of your budget, uh, as all the other boards, I think, need to. And then, I think for this year, we'll, you know, depending on how many you, you come up with, we'll figure out how to work that out for this year. Unless you guys have any issues with that.
No, I agree with you.
Sounds great, yes, I'll make sure Monday comes for our next meeting and then we'll get a, get a.
Yeah, just kind of list, that'd be perfect, and then, then we'll take care of it. Like I said, just make sure in the budget for next year that you're, you put that as part of your budget.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up, rail trail, we propose on. So, um, there's been a lot of correspondence, and we talked at, I think, the last meeting about, uh, the letter that conservation commission sent to Rails and Trails and to Fishing Game. We've had discussions with Rails and Fishing Game. I think, were you guys received on the email today that came through today? Okay, it, it came, came in, I think, this morning from Rails and Trails. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I have requested that they try to schedule, um, a site visit, so that we can get conservation, select board, private landowners, presumably Fishing Game, all together to talk about how to address, uh, the beaver ponding issue, uh, its impact on the rail trail, and make sure that, you know, we're doing what needs to be done while providing for a safe environment on the rail trail. They indicated today, uh, do they have the dates?
Yeah, the dates that they proposed, these are May 2nd or 3rd.
May 2 and 3, yep.
Yep.
So, um, and will we judge on the private landowners, the conservation commission members, either of those dates better or worse?
Take a time?
They didn't indicate, they didn't indicate a time, so. If morning or afternoon, I don't know what, what works for everybody, I know we're, we're gonna have a logistics nightmare, could time to, you know, coordinate 15 different people, but, um, if you guys have a good day or time.
Yeah, we can reach out.
Yeah, that's fine, they just sent it today, so if you guys can take a look, May 2 or 3, figure out what day and time works, we'll reach out to the landowners and let them know that if they're available, they can attend. So it'll be with Rails and Trails and presumably Fishing Game as well.
Ideally, Allison will be able to attend, and she's been doing most of the work.
Yep. You guys tell me what works on your end, because obviously you guys will be able to, need to represent the town. So, uh, hopefully, uh, with that, we'll be able to, uh, at least move multiple work on what should or should not be done. Anything else on the beavers, you know, poachers?
No, I just went through, I was able to ascertain who, where, and why it all transpired. And basically, uh, Mr. Brady came in and they were, they're the ones that did all the work on it. They're the ones that pulled him apart and, uh, did all the work on it. Your butters are not cognizant of it, there's no regard for them to know about your butters, because they're responsible for the safety of the rail trail. And I have talked to both of us, they're not cognizant, fully on board now. They are driving eaters to protect their land under the auspices of the RNSA that is set by the state, which gives the landlord full authority to deal with the situation. And it's just a matter of, of course, to find out who, why, and why not.
Who? Did you say at the beginning of that, who was it?
Craig Brady, is the gentleman's name, from Rail Trails.
From Rail Trails.
So, and that's why, and then, I was able to, the call for service to the police department, which gave me the point of contact, and they can track him back down to here.
How far do you guys email from crack, just so that you're, you're aware of?
And they also said it's a full chronology of past years, work on the rail trail, what they've done in regards to the people that have issued, to ensure that, that it could not be washed out of the system.
Any, uh, Jeff, do you have something?
That's, that's.
Oh, okay, great. All right, so, um, we'll send, I'll get you that email, you guys, a sustaining time. Do you want to turn that down a bit?
I do that.
Is it?
I have that.
Just turn it down a little bit.
It's crazy.
It was, but it's getting a little warm. Uh, next up on the agenda is, uh, correspondence on signage. I hope you've been working on this, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we get, uh, we responded, I responded by expression that the select board last week, Mr. Partikian, I received another 11-page, you know, wrote him a response, I invited him to the select board meeting. He did not have the ability to attend, uh, tonight. And basically, he brought up a whole bunch of more issues, which he claims that we have not addressed, nor have been responsive to, such as, uh, specific signage issues, and it's the point where an 11-page missive were outstanding points. Just kind of leave your head in this, I'll try to answer these questions. I invited him again to attend any meeting. The, uh, primary issue that he had was, uh, sandwich board signing, why the hanging sign wasn't legal. He was, had an issue with the sign on, uh, going to jacket organs driveway, or the heating and plumbing. And the gentleman is deceased, that's why the sign is still there. And then he's, can't understand how Connor's business is grandfathered, nor, uh, Parker's business is grandfathered. And, so, I don't know where to go with this anymore. I mean, I've engaged, I've done the research, I've offered him a complete synopsis, so. Since 2009, I think it was, 15 of them started, here's a background of them, it's unacceptable to me, I, I don't know where to go.
Any thoughts on this?
Don't want to pick the scab on that, but, uh, if they're in compliance with the sign right now, just leave alone and, and move on.
They are in compliance, as you mentioned, in quantity.
Yep, and that would be it? Uh, no, but understand, this is, this is a complaint about other signs around town that we've been addressing in the past year plus. You know, we, we addressed the, the signage at the community church, we addressed the signage at, at the library, Swampscott, Town Hall. It seems to be a matter of, um, somebody looking for, uh, additional issues where they're not. And I, you know, I don't, I, at this point in time, I think we don't do anything unless he wants to come in.
The, the only point I'd offer is that I referenced in the last email, what I sent to him, was the sandwich board sign is in the driveway. But it's in the driveway, and that's the issue, it's a traffic safety issue. And the DOT, well, they look the other way for political speech, which they have always done in the state of the capture.
Right.
So if it's not an issue, uh, he's making a point that free to farm anywhere in Newfields. That I objected to that, I'm not, I don't object to political sign at all, what I objected was, was that it's something that will be driven, the driving cut early, kind of specifically says that stuff a lot.
Right.
And it's a safety issue, I think chief may concur to that, with people coming in and entering, a lot of people are there, they have a sign, and everyone specifically says those signs in, aren't, or, or, in driveway type.
Yep.
So I want to stress again, this has nothing to do with political speech, it has everything to do with the terms and conditions of the DUC issue driveway cut, or the access to bird and farm.
Yep. All right, well, bird is right now in, in compliance, don't have an issue with that.
As in quantity and quantity.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we move further with any of Mr. Partikian's complaints at this point in time unless he wants to come in.
And I'll go to him numerous times, come to the select board and address it.
All right, I, I think we'll leave it at that, that, until that, that time. All right. Uh, let's see here, Town Hall rentals. Town Hall rental, there's several, you should have three of them Friday. Uh, first one is Tom Welton. Republican town committee wants to rent the hall for on, uh, May 15th, 2024. Before, about 50 people, they estimate, uh, not out of the hall. Any questions or concerns about the rental, the town hall?
15th, May.
Yeah, yeah. Great, I'll make a motion to approve the Town Hall rental request by Tom Welton.
Sir.
Seconded by Hoby, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, second one is, again, uh, Tom Welton, Republican town committee, this is on time for, uh, June 19th, and might as well do it all for April. Uh, and the last one is for August 22nd. Do you have any issues during the year, throughout the same time?
I don't have the 22nd.
24th?
I hear the 19th and the 11th is the sort of.
Oh, okay, well, it's the same thing for August, okay, great, I'll make a motion to approve both. Seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
So are the dates the 19th, 28th, and 21st?
Uh, August 21st, uh, May 15th, and June 19th. All right, uh, so we have a, uh, veterans exemption, should have in front of you. Take a look, and some of the veterans exemptions, exemptions that we have.
Who's actually with us, or is it two?
What, veteran?
No.
Three. One? Got two? Yep, you're right. Um, I'll get a chance to take a look at the exemption, veterans exemption, see if there's any questions. Have a look at this. Any questions?
Just stand by one, please.
Sure, sure, sure. Great, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the veterans exemption application.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. Uh... Oh, it's the formal paperwork, okay. So at the last board meeting, um, we formally designated you as a party to, uh, handle the grant applications. This is just a formal, uh, paperwork for designation authorities for the, for the, for the loan applications. Any questions about that? I think we addressed it last time, so, um, I'll make another motion to approve.
Sir.
Seconded by Hoby, all in favor? Aye. Is it 23rd? Thank you. Board stipends, so we have in front of us an updated stipend schedule, if you want to take a look. These stipends are for various positions, trustee of the trust fund, secretary of trustees, treasurer, supervisors, electioneering personnel. Uh, I'll make a, uh, make a motion to approve the stipend schedule as provided for 2024. Seconded by Hoby, all in favor? Aye. Two places. All right. Uh, let's deal with some quick now, two paper, two, two of those. Um, Town Landing quotes, so, uh, we received material last time for the Town Landing quotes. Uh, this is for the tree work at the Town Landing, Lynn had forwarded the material. The two quotes were from Savitree, uh, which is 3582, and Seacoast Tree Care at 4200. The biggest difference being that, uh, Seacoast Tree Care is going to be doing a little more trimming work around the trees. I talked to Lynn, I asked her which one he would prefer. He indicated 4200 just because of the work that needs to be done, um, to preserve what is a massive, massive tree down there. You guys have any questions or thoughts on the quotes?
Sorry, sir.
Uh, probably in the next month or so.
Before Memorial Day?
Presumably, but, um, it's, it's work that if it doesn't get done before Memorial Day, nobody will notice. Obviously, we're just presuming that the tree won't collapse next month.
For another storm.
Thanks, Phyllis. Uh, and look, you, you guys know, you see, tree trimmers are going gangbusters around here, the utilities are having a hard time finding them. Brian was just able to, I saw, they were working on them, one down on Hilton Mall. So, uh, you know, presumably, they, when you get them in here, assuming he's been communicating with them, but exactly when, I don't know, but he would visit.
Can, can we slide formation down? Mr. Kessler?
Move formation.
Away from the tree?
Especially remember, hopefully, we're gonna have to share, we'll be lucky if we don't catch up, you know, the.
If it's a good day, just kidding, that's right. I, I mean, the tree is not in dangerous shape right now, um, it's, I, if anything, this is.
Quote, quote on it?
Uh, $4,200 for Seacoast Tree Care.
And the other one?
Thirty, call it 3,600 for Savitree. But like I said, the Seacoast was a little more, uh, work in terms of the trimming, and, uh, and again, in my discussions with Lynn, he thought they would do a better job, and it's probably worth the $600 given the size of that tree. Any questions, comments? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Seacoast Tree Care, uh, be, uh, contracted with for the landing tree.
Sir.
Seconded by Hoby, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for that. Uh, all right, uh, conservation appointments, so, um, it's a false, sorry. So, uh, discussions took place last time, um, we held over the appointments on the conservation commission to have a conversation about this, I appreciate, um, members coming in. So, uh, I will open it up for a discussion by the public as to who raised the concerns about this, as well as the members of the conservation commission. Anybody from the conservation commission want to speak? Okay, Kelly, Kelly.
No, go right ahead. So, uh, being naive to kind of the backstory of all of this, I said, okay, if we're holding off on these appointments, let's get it out in the open and see what happens. Based on my conversation at the ConCon, just up late, I said, has anyone said anything, has anyone been saying anything derogatory, or anything wrong, or? No, not that I know of, I mean, I'm just kind of reiterating what I heard, and I said, so, so my question is today, then, okay, so what's the holdup? What would be the holdup?
Well, again, I think based on the comments that we heard last time, it was, it was, the issue was raised, um, and I think that the question was, well, should we ask about this?
So, it's clear that the comments that concerns raised were directed at me, okay? So what I would ask is that we take the discussion of Mr. Mason off the table, um, and reappoint him with a further conversation.
Sure. No, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Again, I, I don't have a problem with that, I, I think this conversation is more of, I, I, we didn't want to reject these outright, given a comment from the general public, but, I mean, as you know, you need to be responsive to things that come up, and I, I think that's all we're trying to do here, is see if there's any issues here that we need to think about and address, I mean, I, I mean, is there?
I have, I have other issues.
Okay, you don't have anything else to add to this conversation?
What do you, I don't understand what you're looking for me to say. We, we've asked, we've asked for all the set, uh, with no response.
Oh, okay, I, again, I, I'm not aware of that, but okay.
I mean, there was an, an open email conversation with Hoby, um, and we asked for dates examples, nothing was given.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not going to hide behind my opinion of, of the conversations that the ConCon has had with the Girards. I just think that's the issue they were talking about here. So, the, these, these allegations that are being made, I wouldn't know what they are speaking directly to.
Fair enough. This one? Yes? Blue?
I was at that meeting, I was the only person here at that meeting.
What meeting are you speaking of?
Park.
What meeting?
The meeting on the 15th of May in, um, 2023. And the comment that was made that I found to be very unprofessional, um, as well as disrespectful, was that, well, the discussions of the Girards came up about their property. The comment that was made was, people with money can occupy properties with easements, thinking that they're able to throw money at these easements and change the intent of the use. It was very specifically. It was very specifically presented at the Gerards, there was a follow-up comment made by another member that said they also had friends that looked at that property and chose not to buy it because of easements. So, that was very clearly a biased and unprofessional statement made it. Subsequently, in at least two select board meetings, when information came up about recording your media equipment, I got up and stated that I have been at a meeting that I found to be very unprofessional and disrespectful to town citizens. There was much more in that conversation that Gerards had no way of hearing. I don't profess to have no half of what the Gerards had been going through, but I, but the conversation that ensued was very biased and didn't give all the credibility to the information that I even knew. Um, so I felt as a, it was pertinent for me to say at subsequent meetings, I'm sure you remember at ConCon, where I was going to say, we need to have all meetings recorded so that someone can go back and actually hear. And I also think that that would help people be cognizant of not stating opinions or being disrespectful or professional. I take full responsibility for having said that.
Sure, so I'd like to speak to the word bias that's getting thrown around a lot. I, I, I think that as a member of the Conservation Commission, it couldn't, it should not come as a surprise that we are pro-conservation easements. So, the, the word bias is being used when, I think by the general nature of our position, um, that's what, that's what we're doing.
Well, can I finish up on that statement? Thank you for saying that. So, I was at that meeting specifically because we, we are a butters to the Bernans. And um, they're, they were on the schedule, Gerards was not, so I was trying to understand what was going on. When the Gerards were discussed, it was very clear that you guys were very much upset with the select board who stepped in and supporting the Gerards. That was very clear. And what is a concern and safety issue for trucks that go extremely close to their house and between their home and garage, when there's children, wildlife, and people, and that there were other things to be done. All they're trying to do is find a successful resolution to this, even as it just was the notification, which South East Land Trust is not willing to do, so the select board was stepping in to transport them, to get some sort of resolution. Planning Board was obviously upset, felt that their hands, that they had dealt with this issue and it was done.
But, uh, conservation.
Conservation, but by the JAS, or term. But then, so that is all clear. There, there was nothing that was done other than by asking for safety and asking for notice and putting initial land into conservation and so forth and so on, which was never discussed. Fast forward, we start talking about the Anderson easement, which is on the Bernans property. And at that meeting, which is why I was there, they were seeking approval of the driveway, historical stone wall being moved with a historical marker, and parking for up to three hundred patrons in cars to be parked on agricultural consor- conserved land. It's hard, I got a little dry mouth, I should have brought some water. So, it was very confusing that when I read through all of the state information on making an adjustment to conservation land and all of those things, how that was approved. And the Gerards asking for safety issues wasn't, was like off the table, we're upset, this should have been done, they shouldn't have gotten support, you don't want to ruin your, your reputation with Southeastland Trust, which was another comment that was made. And yet Southeastland Trust, years before, um, the property that the Roosevelt's now owned, didn't allow parking, which is why those folks moved from the wide way, based on the fact that it wasn't good stewardship of land to allow parking on easement land. So, I walked away extremely confused because seven of the steps to be met for making amendment, three of them are really questionable. One is that it can't be a beneficial event for the new owner. Can't override the intention of that easement. It can't be a neutral or negative impact, let's say neutral or positive, impact to the property. Parking cars on agricultural land for up to three hundred multiple times a week, I hardly see as a positive or negative benefit to agricultural land. So, again, I understand your position, but I walked away as a resident extremely confused. And I know you guys did the right steps, you had attorney general, um, lawyer on the phone, I think she was on vacation in a rube or something like that, Colin. So, I know that you did this. The, the meeting? That meeting, someone called in to approve the amendment of the Bernans easement. And you had counsel call in, whoever that was.
I'm sorry, I, there was no amendment made.
No idea what happened.
For the parking?
Yeah, there was no amendment made for that, that's.
How, how are they able to park?
How are they able to park?
What?
So, my first.
Let's just sit on text for a second, trying to follow you. Then, then the, the issue in front of us, and we're not going to resolve issues about either of these easements tonight. That's not the issue. The issue that was raised, and the one that we were addressing tonight, was the, the questions that were raised about the Conservation Commission, and therefore, we held over these appointments to have a discussion about that. So, let's, let's stay on topic here. If there are other comments that somebody wants to make about concerns, then raise them now.
I think what we're just trying to do is explain the bias that you asked.
Okay.
Yeah, I was really just trying to say, it became very hard to understand that the biases weren't there when there was such a big conflict.
So.
Uh, so I. That comment, the, the idea with, wait, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Go ahead, Mark. The idea with bias, so my thought is just thinking about it from a finite within the box here. If he has a, let's say he has a bias, okay, and he has his own opinions on something. Should you say to him, you're not going to be appointed for this position because you have that opinion? I don't like it. So, if that is the case, then uh, everyone in this room who's. Let me just finish. So, when, when someone's chosen or elected, if they have an opinion on something, they're like, well, let's get rid of them. You know, I mean, that's kind of the same idea. I don't know the full background, if he was being rude and all of that. So, now it's out in the open and say, let's stop that, you know, let's stop with the, with the rude comments and all of that. That, that is never, ever helpful, and I understand that.
So, I never said he was being rude. I said my solution to, instead of bringing this up and starting the whole hull of this to say, all meetings need to be reported.
For sure.
Never said names, never said anything.
Yeah.
Other than telling the Gerards that they really should try and understand what happened at that meeting, because I certainly didn't.
It's, it's nothing that I hadn't said to you guys in, in.
So, you, you have said to us in the past that we have no right to move in with your money and easement.
I, I've told you in the past that you purchased the property knowing exactly what the stipulations of the easement were.
And we spent four years trying to talk to you.
It's not just the New Fields Conservation Easement, it's also a self-easement as well.
But what you are not explaining, what was not explained at that meeting, was the fact that we're willing to work with Southeastland Trust to, to come up with a resolution.
The resolution, that you have this Southeastland Trust has nothing to do with us.
It absolutely does, because we're trying to come up with a resolution where we're going to donate two acres of built lot that would negatively impact all the conservation land back there, okay? In addition, they have more vehicles going back there for driveway and housing, but we're willing to put that into conservation, therefore, yes, we fight our own laws. And the fact that you can support us in that.
If, if, again, so the idea is his, his assignment being held up at that, if it's in question.
Well, I'm just feeling like we're being disrespectful in the meeting, and now I feel like we're being disrespectful again. I don't understand how you guys have allowed somebody that's being disrespectful when it's, it's.
Well, I don't see him as being disrespectful, I see him as disagreeing with you, so that's, I don't.
I find us disrespectful because we had many meetings, we've been at many meetings, we explain the situation anytime. We're trying to do something that would benefit, yes, self, that we feel.
I get it, I, I can understand your frustration, because I said at the last meeting, like, okay, twenty-four hours? Okay, why not give them, give them that, you know, but it's not for me to decide. You know, uh, there's, there's a lot of hands on this, I guess, so, but my thought is, in fairness, is if he disagrees with you and has, has a, if he has his, his angle on it, I mean, you can't say, well, we're not going to appoint him, we want somebody that's going to give us a better answer. That's not really the way it works.
Yes, Hoby?
It is just a matter of having a different opinion, and I don't think that's what the issue is. Yeah, I think it's a matter of which it was addressed and tone and the attitude that was set. Having been under receiving and some of your comments before, Joe. And so, at a ConCon meeting, the most recent one, was on fifteen January twenty-four, it wasn't a matter of some disagreement, it was an economic attack against me when I said I have issues with the way the law property is being discussed. It wasn't a simple, I disagree with you, it was an economic attack against me personally, and I raised an issue. And noticeably, I went through all the minutes of the Conservation Committee hearings, and it was referenced to me previously, like Chris, that all the attendees were listed, but one thing weren't, because I know people who are at meetings and they were enlisted. But the fact that the way you handled it, to me, was unacceptable, and the Gerards, to me, it was unacceptable when you, when you, we had that discussion at that meeting in January, and what I've been able to ascertain, you're reporting with the Gerards, it was unacceptable. Now, it isn't a matter of disagreement, people can disagree on issues all the time. I have no issue with disagreeing, but it needs to be done in a respectful, polite manner. Despite the fact that people are taxpayers in town, and they have a right to verbalize their opinion, they're standing for it, they believe. But no one, whether it's on this board, the ConCon, or Planning Board, or the ZBA, has a right to do an economic attack. Very, so acceptable.
Okay. I mean, that, that, that should be a blanket statement across the boards.
And I just covered all the boards, what I said, I just covered all the boards.
It should be, uh, so my, my one thought was that, uh, I've heard, and, and I'm not protecting or talking about the Bernans, but I just thought it was a little odd, there was someone that mentioned calling Jeremiah a farm boy, and I thought, what? They, they're sitting, someone's sitting on a board and calling a taxpayer farm boy? Should he not be removed then, if he's using that kind of language to someone who's a taxpayer? Who are you referencing? I have no idea, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna reference the name, I'm just saying, you've heard it before, because some of you are at these meetings, and I don't want to stir, you know, open a hornet's nest, I'm just saying. There have been plenty of times where people have made comments, yelled, uh, come at people. All of that could be in the spirit of discussion.
However, it happened, we weren't there to be able to discuss it.
Yeah, I get that, I understand.
May I speak to that example meeting? When that comment was made, it was specifically talking about who was using the platforms. That was not in terms of Jeremiah, it was in general term, when it could have been a better term used.
General term.
A general term used for everybody accessing the freezer.
Who, what, what board was this?
Um, I think it was in summer meeting, uh, um, meetings in between, I can go back and see because I have that written down in my notes.
So that kind of stuff shouldn't, shouldn't happen, I mean, that's, that's.
They could have used a much better term.
Of course.
And as we all, there's, like, we can't say nasty bad behavior when we have safe places. There's a lot of things that are, are, we found very politically correct, right? But that statement has been used and taken on context many, many times.
But if he disagrees with, with some of the things, and maybe, and maybe he's had, and maybe the spirit of his, of his, uh, his arguments have been more heated than you might. But I don't know, I don't know if that's, uh, uh, a reason to say, okay, it's not.
Well, we just felt, we spent four years coming to New Fields Conservation Committee meetings to explain that self, and I never once felt that I got support from him. In fact, there was some meetings where we felt like we were being accused of doing things that were illegal, like providing safer driveways for our family when we asked Southeastland Trust to open up that contract handed to you to start that permit. For six months, they didn't do it, so we took it upon ourselves to do it, so that a sixteen-year-old guy who just got that license has a better individual going in and out. And I even had it in an email after we went to one of the meetings, we felt like we were, you gave us the impression that you did something wrong, instead of supporting us with a safety concern that we have. I just don't understand, how would you feel if something happened to somebody in our meeting? You have not supported us at all whatsoever. And then in the same meeting, the same meeting, you're supporting moving a historical level and a parking lot to their first put on conservation land, but yet you cannot support a safety concern of others. When we're willing to put more conservation land, or more valuable land into conservation. I just don't understand that, and to be tapped out negatively without us being present, I just, how do you think that's okay?
There, there's the, the misconception that you're just meeting with me, you're meeting with the entire board, so I think it's important.
But are, are the impressions, the negative impressions we have with the lack of support, I, I don't know, I felt primarily we were. I want you to say that, I didn't feel that way.
Many of the board members also, they, they came by, they walked the property, it was down, they went through, it's up to Conservation Commission. Yeah. And Chris was come by, and he said, we're being chanted, like, so, and we had, we're not asking you to do anything, right? But we wanted to understand, kind of, for, for realm, what was that to take place? And it's a lot easier when you're there than we talk for, like, like, good.
We've never, we've never not, we've always provided Southeastland Trust access. So, it's nothing to do with not, we're not trying to give up of them from having access in a different way to maintain it, that is not our mission. Our mission is for them to provide respect, so we can take into consideration where it's a disadvantage.
Did you have to talk to them?
I, I did, Michael, just a question, is, is the issue the Southeastland Trust, what, they are not responding?
Yes.
And then, how is it that the Conservation Committee has influence on them? I guess, what do you, what do you think they do?
They don't, they don't lose this, they don't lose this access. We're just trying to, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to find a, a solution that would work for everybody. So, the solution we came up with, one of the plans was Southeastland Trust owns the property on the whole farm. So the solution we came up with, one of the plans was Southeastland Trust owns the property on the whole farm. So we were willing to put our, build a lot, that's actually a mess-up, but we've got it now. We've got the woods, that's a buildable lot right there. So it's two acres. We're willing to put that into conservation. Um, and also pay a portion of the road going out from the whole farm so that Southeastland Trust could access. Uh, we asked the New Fields Conservation Committee to support in that. That's what we brought them in. So because if, you know, they support us, they could gain more, we'd be putting that two acres into New Fields Town Conservation. Not only that, if we didn't put that acre in, it's a buildable lot, we just feel, uh, it's going to be way more invasive to build a house back there with the New Fields subject system, the driveway. I'm sure that's a lot more invasive than just building a logging trail. It's already stated in the deed of coal farm that they're able to do it. So there will be no need to put their belt. So to us, we thought that was a good solution. And we just don't understand why we wouldn't give them support, especially in the same meeting when the Verners were, were approved or unable to approve, but they were supported to part 300 parts of conservation land.
Fourth, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. So we just feel, we just feel that the standards are not the same. And I feel like they should be.
Do you have comments?
Um, yeah, I guess in reference to the Verners and the Rock Hall, I know that we worked our Ethan Monder, who goes through the meetings. Um, I think she's monitored her guys.
Wait, let, let me, I don't need to cut you off, but I, I don't want to rehash issues that are not relevant to each-
Then that's kind of my point. So, um, in that case, due to the, the fact that we tried to re-diligence and some other unforeseen factors, our hands were essentially tied. Um, when it came to the discussion about your property, far as I understood, you were talking about working with Sel to conserve that two-acre parcel with Sel.
No, we, so, no, we attacked, we attacked.
So that is something that I don't remember, I guess. From those meetings, I remember it being that you're working with Sel to try and come up with a 24-hour agreement, put that in, into conservation, and maybe I missed that part about who was going to. Um, but I think all of the board members feel that it's unfortunate that Sel won't give you that. But we can't speak to what Sel will or won't do with their access to this. Um, I, I wish that we could say, "Give them, you know, give them a heads up." We certainly do when we go out to monitor our reasons to provide either written calls or whatever, and make sure that they're aware of where we're getting out there in the evening.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in reference to the coal farm access, um, I think the board was upset that they weren't contacted by the select board and asked about our input because we had so many discussions about this with you guys for years leading up to this. Um, and so when we saw that the letter was going to be, it was written, they were going to sign it and send it, we were like, "Whoa, you know, why aren't we providing this discussion?" I think that's why that meeting in May was high energy. And people were a little like, "What's going on?" Because we have had, you know, this issue on one for years. Um, and I think all of us want a fine solution to it. Um, and another note is that our meetings going forward, the last meeting was recorded. Um, there was something we were working on when Mike Kessler was on the select board and he was our representative to Comic Con. And I know that there was some, for whatever reason, it didn't end up kind of working out. But this past meeting, when the person was recording, and all of them, it would be recorded.
Yeah.
Let, let me be accurate for certain.
Yeah.
15 marches to the effect of date of all meetings and all boards being effective, uh, being recorded. And we held an offer that because of issue, budget issues, uh, we set up the original bigger project, but then because of budget issues, we scaled it down. And then we, and the election was, and the rug property and all that, so that we just slid it. That's what, but we've been talking about that since, I think, October.
Right, it's been on the line for a long time.
No, I'm talking about the recording, is what I was-
Right, yeah.
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 I think it's fair enough, so there's no question now, right? That, you know, it's he said, she said, and that's all.
I think going forward, we had an opportunity to have the meetings recorded and alleviate some of those concerns. Um, hopefully avoid any further issues, and I'm just speaking for myself here. But, you know, I think that Comic Con has a vested interest in all of the meetings that go on in our town. And I personally would say that if I were sitting here, I apologize, I don't think that the intent truly would have been directed at you guys as individuals. Perhaps more frustration with the situation, I understand that you are frustrated with that. But, you know, with all of this, I think that moving forward really is, you know, where we need to go, and we need to come back to the table and talk about things that we do. But, um, yeah, let's just-
Thank you. So, so a few things. As Toby pointed out, it is now town policy to, uh, for meetings to be, uh, basically live feed, like, or select board meetings out. And we, you know, we put money in the budget to do that.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, and so going forward, assuming the equipment continues to work, um, that's what, what will happen, which, um, you know-
Is a plus.
It, it's, it's certainly a plus. I, I have, certainly have issues about that, and we won't walk down that road. But that being said, um, uh, you know, I, I think the critical issue here, and, you know, it's, not being too particular here, is people volunteer to serve on boards. We have to make decisions. We have to deal with town business. And we need to treat it as business. Uh, I know I have, clearly have been on here almost going on my ninth year, and I have had questions and differences of opinions. I don't believe, I don't believe I've ever said anything personal about people. And Matt, this year, we've had this conversation many meetings. You gotta keep it to the business. You can't get personal. And the problem is when people do that, not only in this room, but around town. We have differences of opinions. You don't make things personal. And that being said, issues come up, things get heated. I'm sure people say things they probably don't need to say. It happens to everybody. Fine, and dandy. But I, I guess this is a good example for all of the boards to take to heart as to, you're going to have people come before you who you don't agree with. And you can argue with them and talk about facts, and talk about thoughts and solutions, and why that's wrong, or that it should be done this way. As long as you're talking business, as long as you're keeping it professional, there isn't a problem with me disagreeing with you and thinking that you're wrong. Lord knows it happens. Um, I think the issue here was, you know, there was the impression that this became personal. The comments were made, personal in nature. And I think we need to take to heart, that is not the way to do these kinds of things. Okay? Um, that being said, look, Mike, I'll, I see your hand going up. Go ahead.
So, that being said, I can tell you that I spent the last year trying to figure out what the Conservation Committee did. Uh, my first meeting, I, you know, I said, "All right, what's my, my role on this, on this board?" And it dumped. What I did find out was, first you had a grievance, didn't really show up at a lot of meetings. So that figured that out, okay? Next was, um, I, I come to a select board meeting before being appointed. I heard the, the jurors talk about the issue with Sel. Um, it just came across to me that Sel was being a good neighbor. And let's, let's face it, that's what they are. They're our neighbor because they're, they're acting in the town, okay? Um, so, so the meeting in May, you know, I had asked, or I had stated that, you know, we were going to put a, a letter out, um, to Sel, asking them to, um, move their, their access point to another access point on, on the wall over there. Um, you know, you were thought, said the bottom line, because everybody would just lost their minds. And then, again, I get, people get, um, you know, spirited about things, that's fine. And, and I think to Faris' point, you know, they kind of felt like this issue had been resolved. Uh, and now all of a sudden, it's, it's come back up again. So, right off the bat, you know, I'm ascertaining that, okay, the communication between Conservation Committee and the select board was not there, okay? Kind of, kind of helping identify what, what mine out was going to be moving forward. So then, you know, the request that was made, and I have to remind those, um, was to rethink the letter to Sel. Um, and because it wasn't, they didn't feel that all health wasn't, you know, inaccessible. So, and I think right after that, we had him come in, that's something, and talk to us about that, okay? So, um, so then, um, sorry. So then, you know, um, talked about putting the two acres into conservation, right? And, you know, as, as was evident by what just happened with the rug property, clearly the Conservation Commission felt that they were, you know, part of their job is to get as much conservation land as they can. So I don't know why, again, getting confused by what this board is doing, you know, this commission is doing, why that two acres was kind of weird. So, so again, more confusion there. Um, and then, uh, again, I just felt like, um, it was the Conservation Commission's, uh, role to look out for conservation. But we had the 29 disaster issue, or 29 emergency issue, sorry.
Yeah.
Where, where, you know, a request was made to the Conservation Commission, like, you guys have been saying that. Clearly, there was conservation land that was affected there, and they didn't want to bother. So again, it was kind of confusing to split that. So, um, so then fast forward to, uh, November, um, where we started, uh, discussing the rug property. And all of a sudden, you know, those conversations turned into, uh, the grassroots campaign and what was happening to, you know, get the, the rug property put into conservation. So we were talking about, you know, the city floor rock trails, um, signs going up over rug property, web page support, um, you know, looking for people to sign up down at the, uh-
I'm sorry. You're saying a meeting, a public meeting was used to advocate for the support or defeat of a specific Warner?
Of course it should. It was, it was being discussed, Warner, but not yet being put up. They were talking about getting petition and get Warner put up.
Okay.
So, so that was a concern, clear. Um, and then in February, you know, there's, again, we talked about meetings at the Rug Barn. Um, and, and getting back to, to Ruth's point, you know, it did make sense to me that they were willing to deal with one reason, they weren't willing to deal with another reason. Um, and then, you know, if, if the job is to get as much conservation land in the town as possible, that's fine, then why not do the two acres? Um, and then, you know, as for, you know, um, as for the comments that were made, I mean, there were, there were comments made to me as well. Um, and I feel that they were refreshing, I feel that very carefully. So, that's what I spent the last year doing.
I would also offer on that, if you go back and look at the minutes of the Conservation Committee, there was, was what I perceived to be strong advocates to be called about the acquisition during the minutes if you review the minutes. Because I went through and I read all the minutes of the past year today. And what I thought was, this is really stepping on the line right here.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just want to make one point. In my opinion, professionalism is number one. And the other thing is that all of our board members are approachable by the public. And so when there's perceived inconsistencies, the handling, or any of those types of things, or statements being made, it becomes very hard to be approachable.
All right, thank you. All right, so the matter before us is the two, uh, open positions that need to be filled. Um, all right, as a start, I will, I will make a motion to, uh, reappoint David Mason, uh, to his position on Conservation Commission.
I'll say it.
I know, I'm there.
Aye.
I'm. So, uh, with respect to Jeff's, I, I, I'm, I'm a little taken aback by being told that there's actually advocacy going on at a board meeting for the support or defeat of a Warner article. Um, did that, is that really true?
I just told you last time.
Is anybody disputing that on the board?
I think it's, it's a project. It's in front of the Conservation Commission. I think it's pretty appropriate to give updates as to where it stands.
Um, where is it, where it stands in terms of what do we do, need to do to support this Warner article? It sounds like you were talking about things about going on a webpage specific for the, for the support or defeat of a specific Warner article. I'm, I'm sorry, that is a line that, that you want to sit there and talk about rug property and the management of the rug property or anything else, I get that. But if there are discussions and, do you think the select board should hold a meeting and talk about what should we do to defeat or, or approve a specific Warner article? Of course we should, as the minutes say.
Well, the minutes, the minutes discussed.
I'm asking the members of the, of the commission whether this took place. And it sounds like it did.
There was, there's references in the minutes advocating for it, but at the Rug Barn, there's references for advocating people signing petitions. There's references in the minutes that cover a number of other issues that are not the pure advocates of the rug property.
I, I, let's, let's be clear. Regardless, coming close to that line is wrong. Okay? The board should not delve into the politics of, of these issues. They should not. They should not be advocating in a formal meeting the support or defeat of a Warner article. Either way, the select board is required to actually say, "We support or not support," because the statute requires us to do that. Short of that, I, I challenge anybody to tell me when this board or any other board has gone out and said, "How do we pass this article? What should we do to organize for this article?" I, I'm sorry, Jeff, that's wrong. And as a, as a chairman of a board, you should know that.
Let me just, uh, let me just comment on something if I can. So, we all have a, an agenda on this rug property, right? And so, I think, uh, if he, if he has an opinion at a meeting on, on how to have that, uh, that rug property approved, is that, is that a bad thing? Is that something that he's doing wrong? I mean, he's not, he's not trying to persuade others in the meeting.
Um, uh-
Yeah.
There is a problem with that, actually. You should not be advocating for the support or defeat of a particular article on a ballot from your position as an official.
Well, the direct-
You want to do it outside of a meeting?
The direct mental-
How that?
It went out, I mean, in that advocacy for, you know, against the property.
Yeah.
So-
Should that be discussed in a public meeting? Absolutely not.
Okay, I'm just, just, I'm-
No, no.
I'm asking purely out of-
And, and I'm not trying to sound harsh here, but I, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm a little taken aback at the idea that a public board is actually taking a position in a public meeting. Outside of that meeting, you can say and do whatever you want to do. You have every right to do it. But as a, as, as a member of a board, you take and hold of office, upholding the statutes of this town, the state, the federal government, and politicizing from a seat is not allowed.
If I may, Michael.
Go ahead.
You found Conservation Committee, that's 20 November of '23. There's now a support group on Facebook. There'll be signs put up in the trails with a QR code and a website. There will be loaded the select board meeting on Monday on whether to support funds. There'll be a meeting, joint meeting at the Rug Barn on the 6th. We need to come up with ways people can help. Uh, Kessler asked about the signage. Hoocher replied that they're all on private property, and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. All right, the matter before us is, is a reappointment. Now, look, I, 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 I don't want to be too harsh here. I, I, this one issue really, it bothers me. But that being said, look, I know Jeff has served on Conservation Commission, he serves on the planning board, he spends time, he volunteers time, and in all honesty, it is incredibly hard to find people who will do that.
Yes, that's true.
And so, here's what I'm gonna recommend, and you guys can throw in. When's our next board meeting? Does anyone know? Is it?
We haven't set it yet.
Have we set names? Okay, we'll set, we'll set a main meeting. Um, look, I'll, my recommendation is, I'm more than willing to hold this open and give somebody the opportunity to step forward to volunteer for this. But if nobody volunteers, I have no problem having Jeff serve on the board. Um, like I said, he's a smart guy. I, I am hopeful that this is a learning experience, given what has been safe here. I, I won't have a problem with him serving, but obviously, if there's somebody else who's interested in serving, I want to leave that away for consideration. I don't know what you guys see as the best.
I think we held it open for some time. I mean, I-
Well, these issues didn't, these issues didn't come up until tonight.
Basically, what you said, that the guy's passionate and that he does put in the time. I mean, that's, that's, that speaks volumes. Uh, what, some missteps, everything is a learning process here. And so, maybe we can- Uh, what, some missteps, everything is a learning process here, and so maybe we can move on with this, and he can listen a little better, maybe, uh, you know, all of us could be pigheaded in, in one way or another, including me. And, uh, so I think, give the guy a chance, let him, let him do his thing. I'm gonna be on that, uh, commission as well. I will be, I will call him on it. If I think he's being a jerk about something, I'll tell him.
Great.
Well, I, I promise you that. I'll try to be as unbiased as possible. Give the guy a chance.
Well, maybe, maybe you got, I weigh in some. I think I'm, I'm leaving that open right now. Um, given the information that's come out tonight, I, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm willing to consider it, I, I'm just not, put it this way, I'm not willing to do that nomination tonight, given everything that has just been discussed. I, but I'll, I, I, again, the other two members of the board want to move forward with it, we can move forward with it, but I'm, I'm willing to hold it over a more meeting.
Question, how long do we get a compensation for?
Three years.
Three years.
Three-year commitment.
Okay, so I would be willing to set with something same, just as something I would be willing to set on a volunteer's board. I just, there's not a good answer right now.
Of course, but we need to do an appointment now, um, so.
Jeff, how long have you been serving on the boards?
Uh, seven years. Can I make a comment? Yes, just based on what Mike described, you know, when he was with me, um, and it seemed like there was a gap of oversight from the select board, and I don't know what, I call my own, but what are the objection, uh, the objectives and goals of the conservation committee, what are the written stated, and who does have oversight, you know, instead of looking at individuals, the process fell apart.
Yeah.
I mean, you didn't have an oversight person, and Mike steps in as an interim person.
No, 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 clearly, I, I, I think you're absolutely right, and I think, look, uh, probably the variety of issues that have come before the conservation commission over the last, let's say, two years, has probably been, uh, more difficult than the prior twenty.
Right.
Uh, and, and again, I, I recognize that, um, I think the concerns raised here are, are ones that we need to think about, to your point, um, I, I think, you know, Mike was pretty diligent when he was on there, I'm sure Mark is going to be as, as well. Um, again, I, I'm just stating my opinion, I'm willing to hold this open until the next meeting, probably in two weeks, and, and see how it goes. Jeff?
Mike, if you have so many concerns, how can we raise thirty? So, and why, like, the timing seems a little changed?
Well, I mean, I had concerns about, you know, when we did talk about the red property, my concern had more to do with, you know, the operations maintenance of that property after the fact, and, you know, you gave your verdict, well, it's on the website, go look at the website, you know, there was no discussion, um, you know. I, I think, I just did seem like I was getting a lot of that cooperation, I know I'd asked a couple of members to, to walk the, um, the easement to a man, or got anybody out there to, to do that, um, just, it didn't feel like there was a lot of cooperation there.
Sorry, Paul. All right, so is, is there any other suggested ways of addressing this appointment at this point in time?
Or you ma, have you made a motion?
Uh, no, there's, the only motion to make is, is, is if somebody wants to do the appointment now, otherwise, all I'm doing is, is not making a motion, and I'm saying, I'd prefer to hold it over if there's somebody else who comes, steps forward, again. Right now, Lord knows, I'm not sure we'll find anybody, but if, if there's nobody who steps forward, great, I, I want the position filled, but, uh, and, and Lord knows, depending on who it is, you know, their qualifications about serving on the conservation commission, but, uh, like I said, given the information that has come out tonight, I think holding it over two weeks is, is a, uh, good compromise as to, and gives us an opportunity to address.
I would vote to appoint.
So you're making a motion to appoint?
Yes.
Is there a second? All right, without a second, then this will get pushed on to the.
One of the things I'd like to address on this, so this seems to be a problem, there's a lack of clarity, I wonder why it is, what is acceptable and what is not acceptable? And I think that something we as a board need to address and establish a protocol and guidance.
For sure.
Like in a better term, a code of ethics, to ensure we do not have a recurrence of such a matter.
Well.
One of the things, if I may.
Go ahead.
One of the things that we established when Mike started going to the con con meetings, because there had been such a gap for such a long time, uh, was that he would report back to the board, to the select board after every conservation committee that he attended, because you can read the minutes, which I read for most of the boards after every meeting, and you can ascertain general drift of what transpired, which we do not get in the ones. And now that one, we're recording, we're able to ascertain the nuance, and two, with the feedback that we were giving from members that when they go to the other boards, we will ascertain to get a greater in-depth feel. Uh, so I think that's a concurrent issue that we need to address.
And, and, let me also just say, look, the, the municipal association has extensive publicly available information about how meetings should be run, issues that should be addressed, things to stay away from, how to deal with 9183, um, and non-publics, all of this. And I highly recommend anybody and everybody who serves on the board should use that resource. It's there, it's all there, and, and there's, it, this is really driven not by town policy, this is really driven by state statute, and so, um, I, 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 that's, I think, the resource people need to rely on as to how to be a board member, how to, you know, organize and operate meetings, roles and responsibilities of the chairs, et cetera, et cetera.
So merge, merge that in dogma, I think there needs to be, taking that point, there needs to be a reference point for all the board members, that here is your resource, and you need to develop a cognizance of what is acceptable and what is not acceptable, and that include if people are diligent, convenient responsibilities.
I had mentioned to Sue Kinan that, uh, when I first came on, that, uh, almost every town has a policies and procedures pamphlet.
We have, we have binders.
No, just for the select board, uh, and, and all, the policies and procedures for every, every, uh, group, so for every, uh, each one of these groups, we should have a full, comprehensive policies and procedures manual in a sense. And we can cut and paste a good amount of that from, from some of the others, so I would just suggest that we do something like that.
John?
Yeah, here we're in town, as far as I know, has rules of procedure that have been adopted by the boards and are followed, and appear to, I don't know about the conservation commission in particular, which is sort of the topic tonight, but I know that the planning board, zoning board, select board, all have rules of procedure in place. And, and I would concur with Michael's points with regards to the municipal association, and I would also go further to say that, uh, if you can connect yourself as someone who is either in an elected or, or appointed role on behalf of the town with the municipal association, and include you into any type of training that they have, which, which they do constantly.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, online too now, it's great.
And I've never experienced a pushback from a select board when it comes to costs for that, if there are costs associated, so, so yes, I, I think that's something that's there, it's a rare public, so it should be.
Well, to me, it's part of the initiative to take your position, to do your homework and ensure you have the knowledge and to come to, uh, hold your position.
I concur with that too, and I would again say, majority of these positions, I think, will be ready to be reflected to and affected to, are, are in accordance with the law and we all take, you know, to uphold that.
Yep. Thank you, John. All right.
Well, if that, if I can, I don't want to hold it up, but, uh, you know, reporting on that, on the, uh, red property, if I can, I was just asked to do a few things in my mind, and not to torture everybody here, but, uh, I was just, uh, asked to give you this memo that was March 4th.
Okay, thanks. From PDL?
Yeah. Uh, also to ask, uh, if there are any questions, any concerns about the process so far, uh, if there's any new information or communications on the project, and lastly, uh, if the town council and, uh, bond council review the warrant article as amended in the past, and if the town council can provide input on processes moving forward.
So, uh, town council saw the warrant article before the election, so, um, I, and I don't know that bond council did or not, but, um, bond council really comes into play afterwards, we can certainly get them language.
Okay. I just.
Do whatever they have. No, no, of course, of course, in terms of additional, um, communication, I, I haven't had any, I think the, what we've done here is designate you for this, I think that, um, you know, there's been, um, some email going back and forth about grant timelines that I think you've been, been responding to. Um, the overall timeline, I believe, is still unchanged, you know, with the idea of closing in, in, you know, basically a year or so from now, um, post the exeter vote, which will presume the legal ballot. Um, to this point, or I guess as a follow-up, which is trying to keep things on schedule, um, I'll, I'll bring up the, the RFQ that I provided you guys last time. So this is basically the idea of, of getting, um, call it a consultant or an advisor to make sure that things like the environmental is done, and it, it looks clean, you know, the survey or title work, appraisal, all that stuff, um, and having, um, somebody who is, uh, an independent third party to, uh, basically, uh, work with the town to make sure that we're checking all the boxes as we go forward for this. So hopefully you guys had a chance to look at that, it's, it's not very detailed, I mean, we're not looking for some, you know, really extravagant, we're just looking for somebody to, to basically be formally hired by the town to advise us, um, and make sure that, you know, I think we have an independent voice on all this.
How would we go about that process? Do we put it out for big?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put out the RFQ, uh, anybody, you know, this is basically people saying, you know, what are your qualifications, what's your experience, um, give us a schedule of services, um, you know, some kind of an estimate about how much time we think this will take, um, and, uh, and, you know, presumably we'll get, hopefully more than one or two back, um, we'll have to evaluate them as a board, you know, score them, and then negotiate a contract, you know, it's. It's not rocket science, but it's, the idea here is to get an independent, uh, voice on this.
Right, yeah, that's fair enough.
Um, but did you, outside of the dates, because obviously these timelines are, will have to be changed, um, and we'll probably just change it for, like, change the year able dates to May, uh, you know, basically get it in the end of May, have somebody come in, uh, hopefully by June, and get, get to here, I'm presuming that would be plenty of time, um, so, uh, but I don't know if there's any other questions or changes that you guys thought from the RFQ that you have.
And just for their verification, Michael, how would the RFQ be sent out?
Oh, uh, we can send it out to, I mean, you know, uh, engineering companies, survey companies, will obviously post it, um, you know, and, and, uh, you know, those are the types of, of, uh, call it generalists who deal with land transactions, that, you know, we want to have their professionalism and their experience, uh, to, to deal with some of those.
I'm good.
Okay, you have any questions?
Good.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, make some final edits to this, I'll, I'll shoot for May 30th on the receipt date, I'll look at the calendars here, you know, what day of the week that is, but, you know, probably like the end of the week, May, towards the end of May, and then probably sometime around the first week of April, we'll put it out. Does that work, excuse you guys?
It does.
Okay, I'll, I'll make those changes then, and, and, I'm gonna write this immediately, and then I'll, I'll get it out.
30th is a Thursday.
Uh, okay, so May 30th, perfect. Um, so I'll make a, a formal motion to approve the RFQ, uh, with the edits as suggested.
Second.
Second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, perfect, thank you. Uh, I will work on that. Uh, audit materials, so, um, the, our auditors, um, this got mentioned actually at Mike's last meeting, um, so we, uh, we're required to provide the auditors with information, um, most of this I have filled out, um, I encourage you both to go through this in detail if, if you think that there is a problem with the way I answered any of these, please let me know, um, but it also requires some personal information, I can't fill up for you guys, so I'll, I'll give this to you, Mark, if you can just, um, fill it out, or go through it, the, the area that, this, you know, the personal information's here, for each board member, just providing some background, it's not the details, but they, you know, it's, so if you can look through that, and then just bring it to town hall when you had a chance, and then we can pick it up and do the same, um, we, you know, our auditors require us to, to fill that out, so. Uh, and if you have questions, ask me and ask Sue, and we'll have to address it.
So I'll get a blank copy.
Uh, that's the original, just when, yeah, you can copy it, or just, you can write, fill, fill it right out, if you think there's any, if you think the way I've answered any questions, you have a problem with, just let me know.
No, no.
Okay?
I get it.
Perfect. I, you know, this is things like, are you aware of any fraud going on in the town, right? You aware of any conflicts of interest, um, are, you know, stuff like that, again, it's the auditors doing their, doing their due diligence, um, for the audit. All right? Um, so, uh, just a few other items, we're not going to address it tonight, we've received, um, some emails, uh, this, uh, this week, um, regarding, um, some issues about the burdens, we're not going to address that tonight at all.
But you're talking about the watchtower, your armadillo, some other.
Correct, correct, so we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, because I haven't had a chance to review these, uh, I don't know if you guys have, but we'll, we'll deal with that at the next meeting, so, uh, Keisha, can you make sure that's on the agenda?
Yes.
For next? Um, and do I have any other outstanding items? I don't think so.
I've got a couple.
Uh, shoot.
So Mr. Booth, who lives down in, I don't know, on the way here, down by the junction, has had an ongoing problem with the railroad.
Oh.
Because they removed a taller 16-inch culvert, replaced it with a 5-inch culvert, and a little of the culvert at the base is probably five or six inches elevated.
The railroad did this, or?
The.
Oh, really? Hannigan, wait, I'm sorry.
Number of years.
Okay, I was gonna say, CSX runs it now.
So, I'll work with you.
Yeah.
So when they replaced that 10 years or so ago, or whatever it was, Mr. Booth wasn't quite sure of the timeframe on it. So the bottom end of the culvert is elevated about five inches from where it was previously with a larger culvert, and it's now a 6-inch culvert, and it plugs, and it may be collapsed, and the stone that's used for the track that falls in the discharge side, and if anybody's driven by there, it looks like Lake Champlain in his backyard. Uh, I have gotten hold of my contact with CSX, CSX, and they are sending out a site engineer to review this.
Okay.
And they think, and Mr. O'Connell, who is the gentleman I dealt with to get all the ties and all the details pulled up from the longer tracks, is, uh, seem rather optimistic that they'd be able to resolve this. And this is a resident of the town who's battled this for a hundred years, and I think we need to break this lockdown down. So I just want to give an update on that, if anybody asked you, or if he approached you in regards to this matter.
No, I haven't read it yet.
We have a potential solution, but again, it is dealing with the railroad, and there's no merits to this, so.
Great. Anything else?
Do you want to postpone pardon of the minutes?
What's that?
Prior minute means.
No, no, we're gonna get to those, I'm, I'm just saying if there's anything else. Do you have any? Okay, so we have two sets of minutes, uh, to approve, uh, April 2nd, 2024, and April 9th, 2024. So hopefully you have a chance to read through those, uh, I know that there was, there was a slight change to the. I know that there was, there was a slight change to the copy on the April 9th ones, right? On page two?
Yes, I see.
Any other comments, concerns, questions about the minutes?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 2nd, 2024 and April 9th, 2024 as edited. Second by Hope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Anything else? Yes, Lawrence, Kent Lawrence?
Yes. After the last planning board meeting, I have concerns in regards to the lot lines and Quin Corp. Lot lines, my concern was voiced at the April planning board meeting and disregarded. It may affect the approval as utilities.
Okay, can you speak up? I'm sorry, Kent, just a little water.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At the last planning board meeting, my concerns over the lot lines for the right of way and property owners on Quin Corp. I voiced those concerns and they seem to be disregarded. This may affect the approval as the utilities are proposed to be added within the right of way. This is a concern as it may be taken of deed of land from the back of lots 27 and 27.1 and from lots 25 and 26. And that's our town tax map lots. I formally request no expansion of the roadway as it exists in utilities until due steps or deeds of lots 23, 24, 25, 26 and 27 have been counted for. In regard to the railroad avenue dimensions, the UNH minutes defines a pound along lot 27 and is registered with a book 1579, page 376. And a deed with a book 1579, page 377. That's defining one line in, on this right of way that the town received in 1961. But the whole right of way, what the right of way happens to find is not clear, has never been clear, there has never been due diligence. And I spoke with a gentleman this week who may have actually done that. Name is Don Wilson, who lives here in town. And he said that he did work on roads, deeds, right of ways with Frank Lane when either he was attorney or I believe he was on the Select Board one time.
Yeah.
I'm not positive, how?
I know Frank did serve for at least a year or two on the
And he was as Town Council
Yes.
For some period of time. I don't know which of those positions he held when that was going on. So this may have been done. Whether or not it was done, it would appear to me to be due diligence to understand what the right of way is. As I had reviewed with Michael a couple of years ago, property deeds in this space doesn't exactly add up. There may be some possibility of an overlay of right of way. However, I feel like this is taking some of my property. It may be taking some leases property. And I could get a relative message. So lots 27 and 28 have recently been surveyed. I'm not sure if I put that correctly, but hers is 27.
Did you just reference 27 and 27.1 and 27?
Yeah, 27 is lease's lot and 27.1 is a lot that belongs to Louisa that's behind hers. There may be differences in rights, rights of way for the, these two lots. They were sold to different individuals, by different individuals. So I, I request that the
We try to resolve this?
Yes.
So, just for clarity, so the issue that Kent is raising here, that again, we had discussed years ago when some questions about Quin Corp came up, is that the deed language for the right of way is poorly defined. And the right of way could be 30 feet, it could be 36 feet, it could be 38 feet. It's, it is not clear. And I think we could say almost any of the documents is
Some of the documents that I have seen indicate that it may go to the tool lot.
Yep.
And I have seen something that makes me question whether that was for the purpose of harvesting marsh grass.
Fair enough.
It's not a very, there's, there's
Quin Corp was an easement that came down from Amos Paul and before him. It was an access back to the field and to the river.
It's messy.
And it's messy. It's very messy and this is old school deed language and it's unfortunate. But it, you know, when the town took the road, the town clearly kind of took it blindly.
Yes.
And with the activity going on at the winery, this is now, you know, an issue. It sounds to me, Kent, that what you're suggesting is that the town needs to hire somebody to do a formal deed and survey and
It may
Make recommendations to the town as to how to properly define indeed that right of way.
Part of my discussion here of Mr. Wilson is he may have actually done some or all of this. And it is not in the book for review at the board meetings or it was ignored. I don't think
I think, I think it's clear it wasn't filed at the Registry of Deeds
Recorded, yeah. Yes.
And which regardless of anything, if it's not reported there, it's now just, you know, speculation.
Yeah, and, and that's, I kind of get it, right? I understand when the Select Board received the deed, they willingly accepted the deed and there was no review. There is a letter from Henry Boyd, who was Milliano Survey. That letter was presented to the Planning Board with a couple of words highlighted in it. However, continuing down through that letter, it indicated that there's a lot of research to be done. You know, there's, there's, on the face it appears as though it's a 38 foot right of way. We don't even know what the right of way is for.
Is your understanding though that Wilson had done a bunch of this?
He did a lot of roadwork.
Lot of roadwork.
And he, and he may have done something, I'm not sure that he had
Roadwork or like, like looking up the deeds?
His, his business is looking up deeds and, and sussing out how far, how far back, what did that actually mean?
Yeah, I get it.
He's, he's well known in that field. He's not surveying, will go to court for what his findings are.
Do you, can, do you have or can you get a copy of the material that you think he has for?
I think the most appropriate thing, because this is deeply volumes and I have, and this is all
Do you have the contact information for Mr. Wilson that you can provide us?
I do.
Great, then let me suggest that you get that to us. I think it's worthwhile for us to engage with him to basically try to identify what is known and not known and what may or may not need to be done.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I know, and we talked about it before, does a lot line go through your porch or doesn't it? I'd like to think it doesn't.
But it's my living room.
If it's, oh, sorry. So, but if, if it does and we're going down this road, does it make sense for us to look at basically formally moving that lot line to better align with the road or what we know as the road to basically take these issues off the table? Because Lord knows, Kent, if you ever decide to sell your house, we're probably gonna have a problem if anybody does their due diligence.
Unless the road is closed and we're looking at that.
Yeah, I know it's been that happen.
You did, okay. I'll make a motion.
Your neighbors may not want that, okay? Let me see, or you can't drive it down the street. No, but anybody else on their road, you'd get
I'll pay her.
But Kent, if you can send that to us, I'm certainly happy to engage on this. I'm on the planning board, I know exactly what you're, what you're talking about. And as we discussed at the planning board, this has been a long open question
Should we deal with that, the planning board, that decision because
Well, I mean, the decision of the planning board, regardless of the decision of the planning board, this is a longstanding issue that, again, you as a citizen and others there, I'm sure would want to have addressed and formalized for your own benefit.
It's a, it's a statement that is putting a telephone pole on the right of way. Well, I'm not so sure I'm fond of that idea. But the bigger part of this is with a 40 by 70 foot building going in down there, this, what was the term, meetings or?
Was it 40 by 70 or something?
Yeah, assembly capacity. And they were asking for 60 people, but that's, that's a lot more than we're used to. But if you put a 40 by 70 foot building down there, the inspector may allow for 300 people. That's plenty of problems for that little street.
No, I, I, again, you know, I, this is not the planning board and I don't wanna, I don't wanna go there. But please, get, get us the information about Wilson. I think it's worthy of addressing and resolving again, regardless of the specifics of the planning. Can you send it?
You can have it.
Apparently not. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I got it, I got it. All it is is a, you don't have an email, do you?
Yeah, I do.
All right, well, if you get a chance, send me the email otherwise I'll give you
Oh, I don't, no, I don't have the
Oh, okay, no, that's fine. I'll, I'll give you, oh, I'll call him, we'll start this process.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, yeah. Anybody else have anything they want to throw on the table? Uh, maybe it is. So, looking at your calendar. So, uh, two weeks. So two weeks is May 7th. Do you guys get it to 7?
Since I go longer than I could be employed, I'm gonna
Uh, let's, uh, let me just look, is the 21st available for you guys as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that'll be just basically
7 and 21.
Uh, yeah, I mean, oh, that's basically in the heart of the, you know, 175th, but probably do work a lot for us to hold a meeting that evening. Uh, 21st, is it the same day? What's that? Is it the same day with the 175th? 175th is going on lots of days. There's nothing scheduled for Tuesday the 21st. I don't think we have anything on the 21st.
No.
The house tour is, yeah, it's Oh, but you know what? The 23rd is historic.
Right.
And I think we're gonna try to set up in here that week beforehand.
Yep.
And I know it's, is it the day after Memorial Day, the 28th? What day is Memorial Day, the 27th, right?
It is correct.
Uh, I'm gonna ask, I guess you do the 28th. It's the day after Memorial Day, if you can't, then let's look at doing the 20th. The reason I'm saying this is we're setting up for historical new fields in here on that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And it's gonna, we're gonna have lots of stuff in here, artifacts, people, things that people donated. We'd have to clear it out if we're gonna have a public in here.
Yeah.
So if the 28th will work, that would be great. You guys okay on 28th? The day after Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Totally.
Okay, great, let's, let's put it there. If there's a problem, move it.
7th and 28th.
7th and 28th. Yes, Phyllis?
Can I just put out a reminder that the town cleanup day
I knew it was coming.
It is May 4th, the rainy of May 5th. It's cleaning up around town and also doing roadside cleanup. So come on here at nine o'clock in the morning between nine and 10 on the 4th.
Thank you, Phyllis, appreciate it. Anything else? Great, oh, yes.
Just looking at these dates and the outstanding issues that we have coming up on compliance deadlines out of the farm.
Well
Just throwing that out
7th is gonna be beforehand, 28th will probably, again, it's, we'll, we'll get some indications of that. We're obviously gonna have to talk to Lee before we do anything. So actually a later meeting in the month probably gives us the opportunity to have those conversations and get some feedback. Let's worry about I don't want to move quick, I want to move right. And so I, trust me, I appreciate it, but I
I wasn't asking to change it, I just wanted to make sure
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and that would certainly be an issue to be addressed on the 28th. Either way. All right, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:49. Second by Hope, all in favor? Thank you very much.